Place and to retain the camaraderie and small town feel that we have here. We're thankful for our community. We're thankful for the members of our community and we're especially thankful for the residents that are here tonight to address the council. We're thankful for the many blessings that we have and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
If the audience would please arise.
I'd like to introduce the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion for approval of this meeting's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting's agenda as written.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We first of all would like to recognize our Springville High cross-country championship team. We sure appreciate that and John, would you do us the honors?
Yes, thank you. Mayor and council members, I'm excited to be able to share with you as we honor excellence, as we honor the girls 2025 Springville High School State Championship Cross Country Team. And as you know, this team is pretty amazing, not just this year but in years past. This is the sixth cross-country championship that we've had here in Springville in the last eight years.
Oh, wow.
And it's just amazing to think about and the boys haven't done too shabby either. But this year they didn't quite get there. They did well, but didn't quite get to the championship. I'm gonna have Valerie Bodley come up, who's the coach, but not right now. I want to introduce the award to help introduce this wonderful team. And Coach Bodley has done a great job herself. She's been with the program for 12 years and she's not just coached the cross-country, she also helps with the track and field and she's currently a math teacher at the junior high. So she helps our community in so many different ways and we're glad to have her with us. Now, this award we're giving to the cross-country team, it is the Art City Spirit Award. It's only the second time we've given this award out here in this setting. And I just want to give some background to it because I think it's pretty amazing what this award represents. A few years ago, like over 100, there were two guys that lived in Springville, John Haven, who is a renowned artist, and Cyrus Dallin, who is a sculptor. And Cyrus Dallin, if you look at a temple and you see the Angel Moroni, he did that. If you go to Boston and see the old Paul Revere statue, he did that. He just is an amazing, amazing sculpture. But what they did is they gifted a work of art each to Springville back in 1903. Haven gave us what's called Stream or Mountain Stream and that's this piece of art that's here. And you can go and see the original in the art museum right now. We have a Haven exhibit right now going on. And Cyrus Dallin gave us one of his Paul Revere models. And so what that did is them sharing their talents started a miraculous thing in Springville here. It became, because they gave us these artworks, we became the art city because that's where the museum comes from and so many different things. We became a place built on creativity, accomplishment, and service. And like Haven and Dallin, this team has inspired so many in our community with their talents. Through relentless effort and teamwork, they've reached the highest level of achievement here in the state of Utah, state champions. This award celebrates their lasting influence on the high school, on little girls that are looking up to them and how wonderful they've done. Their dedication has made Springville a stronger, more beautiful, and more inspiring place. We are proud to present the Art City Spirit Award to each of them. The Springville High School Cross Country Team, our state champions, congratulations to them. And now I'd like to invite Coach Bodley up to introduce the team. And on the back, it has a little saying of the importance of this award, so.
You have the power of the pulpit, you can say anything you want.
Thank you so much for having us. It's an honor to be here. You may or may not know Utah has an amazing running community and it's really competitive. And so it's really an honor and a pleasure for us to represent Springville as state champions and as talented runners in this incredible state. And we love Springville, we're happy to be here and to represent Springville High. So I'll introduce each of the girls. We have nine girls on our state roster and I'll just, do you want them to come up as I read?
Sure.
So as I say your names, you guys come on up. So we have Anna Kent, she's one of our seniors, Maya Boyer, another senior, Chloe Boyer, Marianna Taylor, Sienna Frankham, who's our third senior on our roster, Hope Cooper, Ella Young, Lena Love, and Adrian Stonier. I think all nine of us are here today, which is awesome. So these are your Springville Cross Country State Champions.
Elder Kent, can you come up too for the picture? Oh, Elder Kent. We have another coach in the audience, Elder Kent. We're trying to get him to come up here.
They just look so young and innocent and not competitive at all, but I wouldn't want to take it out on the road with them. So, thank you very much. Okay, chief, we've got some certs and then we get to our meeting.
Mayor and city council, first, congratulations on the elections. It was a win-win. It's my honor to be here tonight to present certificates for an outstanding program that we have in our community. I love this program. It's the CERT program, the Community Emergency Response Team. Joanna can join me here. Joanna leads our CERT program. So what CERT is, is members of our community sign up for a training program where they learn how to respond during a disaster, an emergency. During any wide-scale emergency, first responders will be overwhelmed and so we need support from the community. And CERT is the awesome way to get these people prepared and ready to go. So they go through over 28 hours of training, both online training and in-person training, and it culminates in a practical exercise where they stage a disaster and they go in as a team and make assessments and triage people and render first aid and deliver them to the first responders. So they learned a tremendous amount and we absolutely benefit through our CERT. Literally lives have been saved by people going through the CERT training and helping their family members or the community. So we really commend them for their dedication efforts. And some of our graduates tonight, it's not their first time through the program and for one graduate in particular, he's been here for quite some time. So I'll read their names and if they could come up, come up and line up just like our cross-country girls did, that'd be awesome. So first we have Kevin Anthony, Chad Bearclof, and his mother, Kristy Bowers. We have Alisa Brown, Seth Call, Cody Dryer, Jordan Helm, and her dad Rod Helm. We have Bryce James, Tammy Morris, Tom Morris, Martin Palmer. So Martin's our CERT director, he's been on the CERT team for, so before cell phones, I know that, and maybe before cameras, I'm not sure. But he wanted to take the course again, so is there a pressure? He could teach the course for sure. Mike Randall and Micah Richards. Sure. Can our CERT instructors come over here for the photo too? And then I want to make sure, I missed some people, I'm trying to trigger everybody's hand, but I'm doing good. Congratulations. It's awesome to see youth from our community taking CERT as well, it's awesome. And our instructors can come back and teach the things they've learned in their early programs. It's awesome.
Okay, we're gonna have to double up. All three of you, all the way over here. One, two, three, four, five, all of you over here. Not you. Oh my goodness. Look at me with both of your eyes. Don't look around somebody's hair.
We appreciate the spirit of the CERT program as well as the recognition for the cross-country. We really, it's just a reflection of the community and we're very, very grateful for that. We're here for public comment, those people that would like to make a public comment. If you can kind of keep it in by four minutes or something like that, that allows lots of people to speak. So we'll first start off with Shane Nielsen.
Hello, thanks for the chance to speak. I've been a shooting coach for the junior, Springville Junior Rifle Club for about 10 years. My kids all went through and shot with the club. Won the state champion for a couple of years and, you know, they closed, we, the shooting range got closed a couple of years ago, year plus, right at the end of the season, 2024, 2023, 2024 season. I just would like to express the sadness at, you know, that program kind of hopefully not dying out, but it has been. We have some youth shooters here tonight that have missed shooting and missed opportunities. You know, we have had several people, youth graduate and move on, get scholarships from our program. People shot in the Olympics. We've had national champions come from our little shooting program, our little range. And I would encourage you to think about that as we go forward. I know from our meeting earlier that it may not be possible to reopen the range down there, but I hope that you will consider, you know, finding us a space. Couple options that we have immediately is one, you know, often our matches are in just a small area, gymnasium, or even a classroom where they clear out the chairs and set up portable targets, you know, with a canvas backing, you know, for air rifle. That is, that's where we usually shoot most of our, most of our air rifle matches. In fact, the regional match for the Western United States is held at the, at the Mountain America facility up in, I can't remember what they call it, Mountain America?
Expo Center.
Expo Center, exactly. You know, and they shoot up, they set up, again, these canvas backers and portable targets and we shoot up there for two days. You know, I don't, I would hope that you guys could help us find some kind of facility, even an old classroom or, you know, something. I know, you know, there's, we don't need a lot of space, 20 by 40 would be about enough for 14 lanes. We could get 14 kids shooting. That's what we had down, well, actually I think we had 15, but down at the old range. We would need some help buying some, buying some equipment for that, but, you know, that could get us shooting right away. Anyway, I, kind of what started this whole thing is I wrote an article, you know, as I was not sleeping one night, thinking about these kids that keep calling me, wonder if the range is gonna be open again or if we can start shooting again. And, you know, I wrote it out of a little bit of frustration with the city, mostly for not communicating with us, you know? If we would have known, you know, what you were doing and found out what was really going on, we wouldn't have, I wouldn't have been that frustrated. I rewrote it and mostly wanted to express, you know, what that, what that meant to the community. You know, most of, I would, I would say hundreds of thousands of kids learn to shoot in that, in that facility, doing hunter's education, not just, not just Olympic-style shooting like we do, but learning to shoot and scout groups and youth groups and, you know, we used to have women come in and learn handgun shooting for Relief Society time and, you know, all those kinds of things. You know, it's been a great resource for our community and I would encourage you to, please help us find a space for that. I think that's probably it. Turn the time over to some of these other kids.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. And as you have additional ideas, we would hope that you'd feel comfortable coming back. And like I mentioned, you may want to get two or three people and have some sort of a committee or task force to kind of help solidify some of these things so the communication is better and we apologize. The million-dollar number was a surprise to, at least it was to me even tonight. So it's been long in coming and I apologize for that, so.
It does as well.
Yeah, yep.
But, you know, if we, if, someone mentioned it might be three or four more years and I don't think we'll have a program if it takes that long, you know? But I think, realistically, all we need is a little bit of space, you know? And air rifle, one of the meetings we had with, with the city, I don't know if any of you were in there, I know John was. Air rifle doesn't emit lead, you know? They use, they do use lead pellets, but it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not going fast enough to break apart the lead.
And it's also the combustion, is what I understand too, that you have with the 22s. And so my hope was we could clean it up and then turn it over for air rifle, but with the cleanup being so much, it's discouraging, so.
Anyway, but with air rifle, all we would need is a little space and like I say, they, we shoot in classrooms, gymnasiums, small spaces like that, is where we have most of our competitions, so. You know, we've actually shot in, in high schools that have matches in their high school, you know, so, in other states, but that would, you know, if we could have some help finding a space, that would be great. Thank you.
Shane?
Yes, sir.
When you get a chance, will you email me?
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, Josh Sensinger, is that right?
I'm not a resident of Springville, however, I've been involved extensively with the outdoor range and, you know, at a certain level, certainly with the indoor range, my own children, you know, did some of the shooting there in the not-too-distant past. I really appreciate the presentation earlier and the amount of work that went into this document. I truly appreciate that. I would question, you know, as we, as Springville, you know, looks at this going forward, the number that's, you know, quoted here from Utah Trust, and I understand it was very difficult to get anybody to quote any kind of number, this 200 micrograms per square foot. I would encourage this, you know, you know, Springville City to take a look at that and understand whether that is a continuous occupancy or whether that is a weighted time kind of thing. As we look at the exposure levels for something like a shooting range, it's very limited time and, you know, I believe, generally speaking, it's up to two times a week. And so as we look for additional facilities, things like this, trying to rebuild this program and make sure it stays alive in the future, that we, you know, kind of look at that number for what it is, look at that as a weighted time average. I do not have the numbers personally, however, in my, you know, career, I have been involved with running a range and monitoring health and lead levels of various people. So if someone wants to, you know, reach out and I believe, you know, Shane and I can certainly communicate, I believe we can probably find a more realistic number for what are the proper exposure levels as we rebuild this program.
Very good, thank you. Kempton Nord.
Good evening, everybody. I'm grateful for the meeting that we were able to have. So my name is Kempton Nord. Some of you may know me already. I've been involved with precision rifle shooting for about five years now. When I first learned the range was being shut down, I was actu, it was actually the very day I was traveling back from the 2024 Junior Olympic Air Rifle National Match in Colorado. That news was pretty devastating because of the closure. I was unable to complete in the 2025 Junior Olympic Air Rifle Nationals. Even though my qualifying score was higher than a handful of competitors who were accepted, our state didn't have enough participants to send a full, to send a full team to the state championship as a direct result of us losing access to our range. The Springville Junior Rifle Club has trained gold, gold Olympic medalists and national champions. When the range closed, it didn't just shut down a facility, it, it cut off a path for young athletes like me to train, compete, and grow. For months I lost the ability to practice and even now that I, that I've found another, other places to shoot, it's not the same. The community and the mentorship that made this, is what made the Springville Indoor Range so special. The closure of the indoor shooting range also affected my future opportunities. There are at least 38 colleges in the NCAA rifle program that are actively recruiting and offering scholarships to skilled shooters. But those programs are looking for shooters who are actively shooting an air rifle and 22. And without access to a range to shoot 22, it's, it's gonna be a lot harder and for me to pursue those scholarship opportunities. I've spent thousand-plus hours practicing down in that range. It wasn't just a shooting range to us, it was a second home where we could leave everything behind and clear our heads. I'm here tonight not just for myself, but for the next generation of shooters. These, the kids who could follow, follow the footsteps of past champions trained right here in Springville. Please bring back the place where youth could safely train, compete, and represent our community with pride. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kempton.
Okay, Connie Hansen.
Well, that was definitely hard to follow.
It was.
Kids have worked so hard to do what they're doing and I just want to just go over one thing that was brought up two or three times already. A lot of these kids, we've had Olympic gold medalists come from our facility here. That's pretty special. We have had, that I know of, but I'm sure there's more, go to the Junior Olympics and compete. And that's pretty special. We've had kids, my daughter took fifth in a regional competition against, what did you tell me, Chloe? Seventeen other states. I mean, there's a lot of special things happening in this community, and we really want to see it continue. They've lost so much and I feel so bad for like Kempton and Reese here that are gonna miss out on those opportunities because it's been, you know, taken away from them. And hopefully we can come up with a solution because they're not gonna probably get it, but hopefully other kids will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, I apologize that it's taken us this long to get here. It's not intended to hurt anybody. So I'm gonna just wing this, if that's okay? I'll probably get some dirty looks from people, but who cares? You may have felt differently in the other room, but there isn't anybody here that doesn't want this to happen. We've all, most of us have been down there and know the heritage and the experiences that we've had. So having said that, in the, in the previous meeting where we met, we said, you know, we need to solve one problem before we can solve the other. And, you know, after a meeting, I slipped out and met with some of you and I got thinking about it in between then and now and I thought, you know what? Maybe there is something that can happen simultaneously. Okay, we might not be able to do all that we want to do or do it in the way that we want to do it, but we might be able to do something. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask to have you get kind of a, two or three people together and I'm gonna ask poor Stacy, she's got a thousand things going on, but she's over recreation and this kind of falls in her bailiwick and, and I would ask her to just kind of help formulate some type of conversation about locations and circumstances, possibilities that we might have in the community. Now, there may be none, but we'll do our best effort to try to get through the thought process before we have this, which I'm fearful that it's gonna take some time to get through this cleanup phase. So I would encourage us to at least have some good dialogue about trying to figure out how and what we can do. It may not be the full extent of what we want to do, but it may be something to at least band-aid it to where we can at least get, keep something going, because I think it is very important. I won't editorialize too much, but, you know, this is, this is probably one of the most misunderstood sports because of what we see on TV. I mean, we see guns used for things that you and I just, that's just not the way it works. In sport shooting, you know, wildlife shooting, that's just all part of how some of us grew up. And so I think it's important to keep that spirit and feeling and honor going because that's certainly an important part of it. So Stacy, is that you're gonna be okay? Okay, I didn't get a dirty look from her at all and, but I would just encourage you to slip out And, uh, but, uh, I would just encourage you to slip out and to meet with her and to talk and maybe set up your first initial meeting to where you can start some sort of a little dialogue to, to get this going, so, okay. We're, we're grateful that you came in. We want you to come in anytime. You can call me, you can call my, you can call anybody on this council anytime you want, and you can get updates, and we'll try to do the very best that we can to keep you up to date so that you don't feel like that you've slipped between the cracks, and we apologize for that, so, okay? So thank you for coming in.
If you're gonna email Mike, will you include me in that?
Yep, there you go.
Just so you know, w- we're on your side. We're not trying to shut you down. I'm a competitive shooter, and so I understand, but, uh, like the mayor says, we'll, we'll go to work on it.
Okay, very good, thank you. Lincoln Hubbard, is that right? Okay.
Good evening, let me just pull this up here. Thanks, Sir Patrick, I work for Intermountain Health. I'm stationed mostly at Spanish Fork Hospital, and we like to give you a, a couple of minutes, uh, update every year on what's going on down at the hospital, if that's okay. Intermountain is one of the larger health systems on the western states, and there's just some numbers here which I'll breeze through. The number of people, the number of states, the number of hospitals, and what have you. There's a whole bunch of award, the health industry has an awful lot of awards, to be honest with you. They're all over the place, and, um, the only one here that I would draw your attention to, everyone's very proud of the, the pink one in the middle of the top fifteen. But in the top right, the Leapfrog Award is a very prestigious award, and Spanish Fork has got it twice this year. It's done every six months, and we got it twice this year, so we're proud of that. It's, it's thirty different, um, levels of, uh, patient safety, is what that one looks at. These are the numbers, the, the number we're always asked about is babies. This is from twenty twenty-four, seven hundred and forty-two, there's been more than that this year already, but the year's not done, so I'll have to get you a number. And then annual charity care is one that we get asked about. It's about seven and a half million dollars worth of charity care that the hospital's done in the area. This includes people that need treatment, that do not have enough insurance and that kind of thing, but there's other bits and pieces to it as well. Our classes that we run, training that we give, small business owners, Stop the Bleed classes, that kind of thing, all gets bundled in to that kind of thing. I've mentioned these ones already, um, the, the Leapfrog. Joint Commission, you may have heard of, every three years, they arrive at the hospital unexpected and go over it with a fine-tooth comb and look for things that are wrong, and we, we ranked highly there. We're a high-ranking hospital with patient experience, this is within the Intermountain Group itself, and we are the highest Google review score in the Canyons region, which is Utah County, basically. Gonna mention Megan Johnson, who you may know, she's our president, and this year she was awarded, um, a distinguished alumni award from the School of Nursing at UVU, and she now sits on the UVU Alumni Board as well. Epic is a piece of software, which is just as boring as it sounds frankly, but what it did, um, this one piece of software replaces eight other pieces of software. Intermountain has spent two years prepping this, and it went live about six weeks ago across all of our hospitals and clinics. And the idea is that if, if software talks to each other, then it's a much better patient experience. And there's an app that goes along with it, um, which is proven already to be very successful with our patients, who often get their test results before the physicians get the test results on their computers. It's that quick to go through. So, um, that's going very well, and that's a piece of software that costs a lot, that we suspect will take us for another fifteen years or so, twenty years or so, before there's any update needed. Wanna mention community involvement very quickly, um, chamber memberships, events that we sponsor, and, you know, the cities that we sponsor, Spanish Fork technically helps geographically six cities in the area, and school district, and NIBO, and what have you. So we, we like to take part and do some of the things there, teaching kids about bike safety and wearing helmets and that kind of a thing. We appreciate very much our EMS teams, and a lot of them come for breakfast at the hospital. Apparently, we've learned how to cook bacon in a way that the EMS teams like, so a lot of them find their way there over morning. And we do, uh, United Way Day of Caring and, and that kind of a thing. Quick word about the future. Our emergency department is running at forty-five percent above the capacity that it was built for. So we'll be breaking ground early next year, I think, for an expansion. And it was in the balance whether we were gonna get it because of recent fiscal things nationally and, and that kind of a thing, but we're still getting it. So we'll send you an invitation, please come to the groundbreaking. We'll be almost doubling the size of our, our ED, I think we're getting an extra eight to ten beds in there. And we have a new CT expansion that's going in there as well for the imaging department. Just so as you're aware, I asked Megan, um, what our top three medical concerns are, and annual screenings comes in there top, falls prevention, and then cancer rates. Utah County has, um, a higher incidence of cancer than the national average. Perhaps not surprising, we're at quite a high elevation here, but we also have a lower incidence of people getting checked. So that's something that, that's a message that we take to our cities, get, come get checked. You may have seen Megan in the news recently, she's been on KSL, she's been on ABC Four. When we got our new CT scanner, she volunteered to be a test subject, and the scan revealed a lump that shouldn't have been there. And she went, uh, she had a surgery, quite a drastic one fairly recently. She's been telling her story, it was unexpected, and she found it because she got a scan. She's one of the bravest people I know, and I love working with her, so the, the message there that we send to our cities, uh, one of them at least is, is to be checked on that. And tariffs and legislation we get asked about, um, they are impacting Intermountain. We have to save several hundred million dollars from various ways, but no medical staff have been cut, no doctors, no nurses. Um, it's all coming from administration, that kind of thing, and trimming other little bits and pieces, uh, there, but looking in good shape from those. So that's, that's a real quick update, we appreciate your support as a city. Uh, if you've got any questions, you know where to find us, and we, we enjoy serving you. Next year is our fifth anniversary, you may have been around when the hospital opened. It's been five years, if you can believe it, so, so that is, that's it. Thanks for your time.
Very good, thanks for the update.
You can clap, yeah. Thank you, we appreciate it. Megan, hello for me. He's great. I need a, we're going to the consent agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda, any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve the consent agenda is written.
I'll second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's a roll call.
Why is it roll call, it's because there's a resolution. Dad, gummit. Okay, Mindy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Okay, very good, tried to catch a skim, almost. All right. Mr. Riddle, we knew you dressed up for some reason.
I'm just happy the room cleared before I got up, it's usually me that empties things out.
While you're getting your slides up, I failed to recognize those who are here for school projects. Thank you so much, we really appreciate you being here. It's very nice to, to have you come, and, uh, if you want to come, you can come sit up on the stand with us, would that scare you to death?
There's an empty chair right here.
Yeah, in fact, there's a couple of empty chairs.
Absent tonight.
So you're welcome to come up, would you like to come up? You're okay, okay. Sounds good. Okay, Mr. Riddle?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, uh, you've got a staff report in your packet that explains most of these items, but I'll just present them quickly for the benefit that, of those that are here in attendance or watching online. We have need, uh, as a result of some unplanned, uh, events to amend the city's budget in the middle of the year here, so I'll just go through those items, and if you've got any questions, I'll be happy to address them. Couple of these are really just cleanup items, so I'll kind of gloss over those fairly quickly. The first one is in the general fund in our public art department. We just had a, a miscommunication, uh, during the budgeting process that resulted in the public arts events, line item being underfunded about fifteen thousand dollars, so. We've modified based on some experiential data with revenue coming into the, uh, art museum and proposed to restore that intended budget with coverage coming from additional revenues higher than expected, uh, in the current year to fund that. The next item really is an accounting issue. I won't bore you with all the details, but suffice to say that we've purchased a few new vehicles that are not part of our Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund over the years, and our auditor being thorough noticed that we've, uh, generally recognized the dollars from the sale of those vehicles, once they age out, being put into the Vehicle and Equipment Fund, which is where we keep the bank for all the respective departments', um, reserve dollars. And he's saying, well, we should have recognized those dollars in the fund from which the vehicle was originally purchased. So we did that in the current year, but we really wanna keep track of those dollars in the Vehicle and Equipment Fund, so. Excuse me, this just simply moves those dollars that came from the proceeds of sales that have already occurred and puts them over in the Vehicle and Equipment Fund so that they can accrue to the proper account. And we'll address this issue going forward by simply budgeting for probably new vehicles to be purchased out of the Vehicle and Equipment Fund through a transfer at budget time. So hopefully, this will be kind of a one-time cleanup event for us. The next item is in our Streets Department. Uh, the Streets Department applied for and received a UDOT Railroad Crossing Safety Grant, and they've been working on some engineering and design issues for the intersection over at Fourth East and Center Street. Uh, that grant amount is a hundred thousand dollars, so this will appropriate those dollars for expenditure of, uh, the design work and the initial construction part of that, uh, intersection improvement.
What are we gonna do over there? Oh, I, I was gonna say Fourth East?
I'm sorry, that should be Fourth West.
Got, okay, gotcha, I was gonna, I understand Fourth, Fourth West, but not Fourth East, so.
I've been known to be directionally challenged, that is Fourth West. The next item, actually, I think you considered or received a presentation on in the last, a couple of weeks in a study session where, you received a recommendation from the PAR board to appropriate six hundred thousand dollars of PAR reserves to add to the Arts Park Amphitheater, uh, expansion project to be joined with, uh, seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant that we received from the county and a million dollar, uh, donation we received from McQueen Ductile. Uh, this just formally, um, appropriates those dollars from PAR reserves. Uh, the next item is for an automated CPR device to go in one of our ambulances. We had budgeted for one of those devices, we'd like to equip all three with this device. Recognized midway through this year that there were some dollars sitting in fire reserves available for capital purchases, and they're proposing to appropriate those dollars now and sort of, um, accelerate the, the equipping process with one more device this year, and then they can finish that up, uh, in the next budget year so that all three ambulances will have those devices. The next one's a small one, um, there were some PAR dollars allocated to the Senior Center in last year's budget that was unspent, and this just simply proposes to rebudget those dollars so they can, uh, finish out those, uh, Senior Center-related programs that were, uh, anticipated to be funded with those PAR dollars. Finally, uh, the Power Department budgeted a hundred fifty thousand dollars in their capital budget for the acquisition of some software that's actually part of a larger project in the city. The way most software programs are going now is they're more subscription-based and hosted online services. So we're simply moving the dollars from, uh, the capital project over into the operations fund, since these it won't be recurring a hundred fifty thousand dollars, but we're not really buying an asset, we're buying a subscription to a software package. So we just wanna recognize those dollars in operations rather than in capital. You've got any questions on any of these items, I'd be happy to address them, or one of our directors could, otherwise, we'll look to a motion.
Questions for Bruce? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Do we need a public hearing?
And so we do, thank you. Okay, we'll open it up for a public hearing from anybody in the public who would like to make a common relationship to the change in the budget. For those who are maybe not familiar with the budget, anything to do with the budget really is up for public comment because it's the public's money. And so we open it up for public, if there's some issues or concerns or questions in relationship to it, and they can speak to it, against it, or whatever they would like to do, so that's the reason for the public comment, so anyone like to speak to that?
Seeing as there's no public comment or, on this, uh, proposal, I move to close the public hearing.
Have a motion, a second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine to open and amend the General Fund, Streets Fund, Capital Improvement Fund, Special Revenue Fund, Electric Fund, and Golf Fund budgets for operating and capital expenses applying to fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, as outlined in Exhibit A.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second? Dies for lack of a second.
No, he's.
No.
Oh, did he say? Sorry, Jake. Okay, is a roll call vote, Mindy?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm deaf. Okay, Chris, you're up.
Thank you for letting me present again. Just gonna recap a couple slides, uh, that were presented earlier, so the topic, uh, for consideration is a resolution and a, um, a betterment agreement with UDOT for their Phase Three, uh, sixteen hundred south widening project. Uh, so we're looking to get some, uh, betterments for Public Works, landscaping, and street lighting to be included within their project scope. And if there's any questions, uh, that you'd like to ask, I can address those, otherwise, we can, uh, proceed to a motion.
Well, maybe just, uh, for those members of the public that are here and, and maybe those viewing online, this was discussed in our work session previously, so we're all aware of this. Uh, but I just wanna make the public aware that that has been thoroughly discussed and vetted.
And, and maybe, Chris, for those people who are online, can you give me like a one-minute executive summary on, on this so that if anybody wonders what it is and why we're doing what we're doing and kind of works?
So as, uh, part of, uh, when UDOT comes in and do, does different projects, uh, that impact, uh, the city's, uh, infrastructure, so utilities and other things, uh, or, uh, maybe their bare, um, project, we want to add betterments for aesthetics or other things that's part of the city code. Uh, we, uh, work with them on these betterments that they would include in their, uh, construction package. Uh, so with this particular project, uh, there's, uh, utilities that run along this corridor that are called for in our master plan, such as, uh, PI, uh, system improvement, uh, to go the length, uh, additional storm drain infrastructure, uh, some landscaping betterments and street lighting. So as we, um, have gone through and worked with UDOT, we've established a cost, and, uh, so then we go through this process of, uh, re- basically allocating a budget to, um, expend funds to UDOT in order to complete these things with their project. Uh, so the cost of, of these, um, in the Public Works side of things, it's, it's around two point, uh, five million. Uh, there's an additional, um, credit that we'll see for some betterments that have to do with, uh, withholding concrete in the medians that will come back in the future and do, uh, landscaping or possible art enhancements. And then lastly, there's a cost of, of about four hundred thousand dollars for some, uh, conduits to go in to the length of the project to allow for future street lighting so that we don't have to come back and cut. uh, conduits to go in, uh, to the length of the project to allow for future street lighting, so that we don't have to come back and cut or bore any of those, um, those improvements. Uh, so these betterments as a whole allows us to be prepared and reduce costs in the future um, after the roadway is constructed, so that we don't have to go in and, and cut into new infrastructure and, and then patch it back up.
Very good. Okay.
Sorry, the total amount that you're going to submit to, um, UDOT is around three million dollars?
So, uh, two point six million.
Is that inclusive of the four hundred K for the street lighting conduits?
Yes, that's inclusive of all the costs that would be due, uh, from the city to UDOT, um, and then we would still have that credit that we would have internally, that we would, um, put towards the landscaping.
But, but it does not include the median strip that Emily?
So the two hundred, the two hundred thousand that we'd have in credit, we would have put towards, uh, any future improvements like the landscaping and the art components or lighting, um, it through the corridor. So may, that two hundred thousand will be primarily towards the medians and anything we put in the medians, and then, um, additional monies will have to be, uh, put in for lighting or any park strip improvements. I think the anticipation is that development would pay some of their way as, as this corridor is developed. But we would, are looking to set a standard now, so it's a unified corridor.
Very good. Thank you, Chris. Okay, other questions?
I'll motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty, entering into a local agen- agency cost estimate betterment agreement with the Utah Department of Transportation for the construction of underground utilities and other betterments within the sixteen hundred South corridor as part of the UDOT sixteen hundred South Phase Three widening project.
I'll second.
Okay, it's a roll call vote. Jake?
Yes.
Mindy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Very good. I think we have reason for a closed session for property. Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this session and move to a closed session for property.
Second.
Those in favor say, oh, roll call. Sorry. Craig?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mindy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here. Josh, it's good to see you, buddy.